Twenty twenty-five shall come to order. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council. We have some additions here to the agenda. That's a street closing request. Clear Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, July 4th celebration, and that's from July 2nd to the 6th. Brews on the Beach on July 12th and the Clear Lake Yacht Club Regatta on July 10th to 13th. Those are all street closures. With that addition, a motion to approve the agenda, please.
No move.
Moved by Dana, seconded by Mark, that we approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same motion carries. And now to approval of the consent agenda, including the following. A, approval of the city council meeting minutes of June 2nd, 2025. We need approval of the bills and claims, A, of which you have a copy. C, approval of pay estimate number 12 and the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents to Dean Snyder Construction for the Lakeview Room and Van Shell Improvement Project. D, resolution 2519, a certificate of resolution 2025 for the city of Clear Lake, Iowa, section 125, premium only plan for play year ending July 30th of 2025. E, following licenses and permits, liquor license, class B retail alcohol license, Louis' Custom Meats, class B retail alcohol license, weathered elements, and Rookies Outdoor Service privilege for Thursdays on Main. We have a cigarette permit, Lake Lickers, Maverick 5120, and Randy's Neighborhood Market. Motion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Beth Ann, seconded by Creighton, that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Now is the time, the place for the, any citizen, the only wish to address the council on any issue or item that is not on the agenda, please approach the podium, state your name first and last, and give your address so the clerk can properly enter into the minutes. This is not a discussion time, nor a question and answer time, and you have three to five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, my name is Brenda Goode, spelled G-O-O-D. I live at 1010 Main Avenue, Clear Lake, Iowa. I am here tonight to discuss the 2022 East Main Avenue Street Reconstruction and Bike Lane Extension Project. I hereafter will refer to as Street Project. My husband and I have lived in our home for thirty-one-plus years. We bought a rundown rental property and worked very hard for years to remodel, landscape, pave the driveway, approach the driveway and the sidewalk, along with building a new garage. We made our house a home. We look back on all our planning, hard work, and finances spent on our house to make it a home. And we hope that our home enhances the neighborhood. As we look outside our front door, we see a hard work that has been turned into disappointment. A once well-maintained yard and sidewalk have been replaced with uneven dirt with rocks, clumps of dirt and weeds, along with a sidewalk that has heaved. Imagine our dismay. A few items provided by the Street Project included new sod and new sidewalk. And after paying a rather large assessment for the Street Project, we have what I before described. This is disappointing on several levels. Disappointed that people will not return phone calls, being made to feel like you are not heard, and not having to say about projects, but expected to pay large assessments for disappointing work. The city seems to have drawn the proverbial line in the sand where the sod is concerned, making it this property owner's responsibility if it fails. Something to think about. Does the city want this resident to feel disappointed or proud of the Street Project? I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will definitely take this under advisement. Appreciate your being here. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Welcome, Dave.
My name is Dave Holstead, H-O-L-S-T-A-D, and I want to thank you for letting me talk for five minutes, and I'm going to use those five minutes, if I may. I lived at 613 South Ninth since fall of 2011. My neighbor to the west at 614 South Eighth quit mowing about a fifth of their lawn, maybe ten years ago. I didn't write it down because I didn't think I needed to at that time. So about a fifth of their lawn's turned into Virginia creeper, small trees, and then another plant that's nightshade. So I've been a volunteer at Central Gardens, so I talked to the people about their, what this possible plant could be, last fall, and they thought I was describing nightshade. So I started looking into it more in May, when it started flowering, and I determined it was nightshade. I didn't know the species at the time. So on the 27th, I called the city to report that my neighbor has nightshade starting. So that was twenty-one days ago now. So on June 6th, I took a picture of, then it flowered then, took a picture of the nightshade, and this is what the result, oh, here's the picture, not that I, here's a picture of their lawn, not that anybody can have that they want, but quite a bit of it is not mowed for at least a decade. There's trees four foot tall in there. So here's the plant. It's not a very great picture. When it flowered, I could identify it then. So I Googled it, the picture, and this is what it came back to. Image shows Solarian Declarium, also known as bittersweet nightshade or purple nightshade. It's a perennial vine, scrambling shrub to Eurasia. Here are some key points. All parts of plant are poisonous to humans, livestock, and pets. Unripe berries contain the highest concentration of toxins. Now I have, they started now this weekend, berries. There's green berries over there. So in a few days, they'll turn red. Symptoms of poisoning symptoms can cause nausea, vomiting, slowed heart rate, reduced body temperature, vertigo, delirium, convulsions, and potentially death. Now, I'm not a doctor, so I can't, there's hundreds of species in Iowa, so I'm not going to say what's toxic and what's not. I'm just going to go by this, what I read. Maybe there's some that aren't toxic, but I'm going to go by this. My neighbor to the north and south, I see them every day, talk to them every day, so if there's a problem, we can communicate. These people that, in this address, they're never in the backyard. I never see them. They hire a kid to mow it, so I never can communicate with them. I could go around and have a confrontation. I'd just soon not do that. That's not the way I want to be. If I could ever be in the backyard to talk to them, it'd be great. Neighbor to the south of me, Conix Field, I asked if I could see if it's spreading down her fence line. I looked, and I found fifteen to eighteen plants down her fence line. I have a whole list of book back there that birds, birds can spread this stuff, and necessarily won't kill them, even raccoons, squirrels, skunks can spread these things all over. So I sprayed her fifteen plants. She okayed that I did that. Now, my neighbor to the north, Evas, I pointed out he had some plants, so he went and chopped those down right away before they would seed. And there's quite a few plants over there. I even talked to the neighbor to the east of me that bought the Donadel property because they have a toddler. I wanted to alert him if there was berries over there. I didn't want that, that'd be horrific, or something like that to happen, a little kid eating berries. So I talked to him, and we walked down his fence line. Like I mentioned, I have a book back there that shows how many birds can spread these things. I didn't need to bring that up now. I understand it's not on the State of Iowa Noxious Weed List. It's not on there. For whatever reason, nightshade is not on there. But I just wanted to mention that it's toxic. I think that's more than noxious, to me. I was told it would be dealt with Friday by Mr. Ritter, but nothing happened. The whole weekend is of today, nothing has happened. Now, I mentioned the berries are forming now. They're getting green. Birds are going to start spreading them. Here's the questions I have. I know I can't communicate with you, but these are my questions. What does the city do if something is toxic? I don't know if we want to wait fourteen, twelve, twenty days, or something is toxic. Should I go around to other neighbors and alert them about this plant? I was going to, because it's spreading up and down all the chain link fence lines, and everybody has a chain link yard there. Should I go around to other neighbors and alert them? I mean, if the city isn't worried about it, why should I go around and tell people? I mean, that's the way I am. I want to tell people if something's happening, but, and I'm just curious if the city should put something in the flyer, the clear flyer, in July, that there is toxic berries probably out there, to alert little kids? That'd be just terrible if something like that would happen. I guess my last comment is, this isn't twenty blocks away from me. I stuck my tape measure through the fence, and one of the plants is thirty-eight inches from my property. So what, I just wonder, what people do if toxic berries are thirty-eight inches from your property? I have a two-year-old lab. She's a hunter. That's what I do. She, once I let her out in the backyard, she runs the whole thing in ten seconds. People say, well, keep her away from, how am I going to do that? She just runs the whole yard, looking, hunting, looking for things. So my question would be, in my fenced yard, it should be a safe area for her, what do I do? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dave, you can be sure I will be in touch with you at some point this week. Anyone else? Thank you. Entertain a motion to, we can move right on. We'll move right on to unfinished business, which there is none of the six new business. City Hall Security Renovation Project interim review. Mr. Matt Steading, City Engineer, welcome, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Hope everybody's having a good start to your week. This one's been a long time coming here, so, you know, we're ready to sign off on the certificate of substantial completion of the renovation project that we did on City Hall. We have had a lot of people come through, and there's been a lot of positive comments with everything that has been done. I don't hear everything that goes on up front, but I hear bits and pieces, and I always hear people oohing and aahing over what we had and where we are today. And I think that is a good signal of, you know, what we're trying to do here with this project. So to keep it short and sweet, I would recommend a approved payment of the final retainage in the amount of forty-one thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-eight cents to Henkel Construction to wrap this project up and get her off the books. You guys have any questions for me? I'd be happy to answer.
And what were we doing today out front, or window people?
Yeah, so those were Eddie's Glass. They're redoing some windows, yep, in the lobby area. And then, not that it is with this project, but just an update, so I have, we have the HVAC installed that's going to take place here. We're going to be demoing and then redoing the HVAC in our mechanical room. So I've pushed them till, to start tomorrow, in hopes that we have kind of a decent timeframe in between now and our next council meeting, to give them a little extra time span, in the event that, hopefully, we won't have to push a council meeting into the, into our new conference room. But if we have to, we may end up housing one in there. But if everything goes according to plan, we should have everything wrapped up and done, so when we come back from the holidays, we're in good shape and we have well-functioning air at that point.
Relief.
Yes, sir.
That's good. Any other questions of Mr. Steading, Council? Thank you, Matt. Therefore entertain a motion to approve payment of final retainage in the amount of forty-one thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-eight cents to Henkel Construction of Mason City, and this is with regard to City Hall Security Renovation Project. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Beth Ann, seconded by Bennett, that we approve the final retainage amount to Henkel Construction. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we need a motion to approve resolution 2520, a resolution accepting the work of Henkel Construction. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dana, seconded by Mark, that we approve resolution 2520. Is there any discussion? Roll call. Mark.
Yes.
Creighton.
Yes.
Beth Ann.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
And Dana.
Yes.
Motion carries. Five, zero. Resolution 2520 is duly adopted. Six B, 2025 Street and Utility Improvements, contract number one, intro and review. Mr. Steading again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. So we'll just go through this here quickly, and just going to kind of give you an update of what we're looking at for this first contract of the project. If you turn to your gray sheets, you'll see that there's a plan sheet there that kind of lists out the utility part of this project, which is what we're focused on currently. So if you take a look up on West Seventh Avenue North, we're going to be highlighted in the pink there. That's going to be some new storm sewer that we're proposing to run to take care of some drainage issues in that part of the neighborhood. And then, we had an add to the project after we got in and did some televising. So right between West Fifth Ave. North and Nineteenth Street West, through that park area, you'll see another highlighted pink storm sewer. That storm sewer, we found to be drastically undersized and not in great shape at all. In heavy rain events right now, there's water that ponds up and almost goes back into some of the neighboring garages. So we're looking to add that into the project while we're down here and make things right and get that adjusted so that we can take care of that stormwater runoff in that area. And then if we move on here and we look at Eighteenth Street West, you'll notice that we have water main proposed all along the east side of that street. We have walked this whole area, done the survey and everything. There's a few areas that we're going to go in and do some directional drilling instead of open cutting, just because we're going to be going underneath some retaining walls that we don't want to deal with. And then also, there's some homes that have some really nice stamped concrete that I'm not at all going to try to get in there and touch that, because you're never going to be able to get that to match. And if I was the homeowner, I certainly would not want that. So we're going to be directional drilling under some of that, too. And if we jump over, we're also proposing to run some water main along the west side of Seventeenth Street West, as well as West Sixth Avenue North on the south side of the street, and then finishing out there with Highland Drive on the south side. So just a couple things to note. West Sixth Avenue North, when we went through our budget period, that section of water main was not included into our original budget numbers. Once we got into the project, started looking at everything, that line has had so many different repairs on it over the years that we felt that it was necessary to get in there and update this line while we're doing these roadway improvements. So the last thing we want to do is do a nice overlay on this street and then get into a situation where we got to go back and do utility work on it or handle any kind of improvements. So that section was added into the budget. So this original contract one was, construction costs were in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So this water improvement along West Sixth Avenue, as well as the storm sewer improvements that we added to it, brought that cost up around two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars roughly was the cost estimate for that. Now, to handle that cost, we do have other water projects that were in our original budget, which we're proposing to just kind of shift some of that over. They're not dire necessities for this season, where this one is, in my opinion. So we're going to do a little shuffling of that. But that brought that amount to around one million thirty-six thousand dollars, adding that water main extension. So when I got out and we walked the actual roadways, there was a fair amount of curb and gutter that was proposed to be replaced. By the time I got through and paint marked everything that was in need of replacement after we got the official survey completed, it ended up doubling close to the amount of curb and gutter that we were proposing. I don't want that to scare people, but the overall contract one amount went to around one point two million dollars. So between contract one and contract two, which is the roadway portion, which we're going to come back in the spring and do, we had an overall budgeted amount of one million ninety-three, or one point nine three million dollars for that contract one and two combined. So after all of these additional improvements that we're doing, so we're adding a substantial amount to it, after we got into it, there were several areas that were not as drastic as what was originally proposed, so we have some cuts in various areas. So that final estimated budget between contract one and two is going to amount to about two, a little under two point one million is what we're looking at right now. So it's, for what we're improving and for the cuts, it's not a substantial difference of what we're looking at in the overall grand scheme of the project. But I do realize that it is definitely higher than what was originally proposed. So kind of what my thought process is on this, we're going to set the date for public hearing and bid letting tonight, if you guys choose to do so, which would be my recommendation. Before we go out to advertise for bids on June 20th, we'll have the final updated cost opinions. We're still going through and reworking a few items on those. And when we put this out to bid, I'm going to propose that the direction that we go is we put it out for contractors to finish construction by the end of the year on this contract one, but then we do an alternate where they do not have to finish construction until the, until mid-June of next year. And by doing that, that if bids do not come in favorable, we could potentially push the roadway portion off until the next fiscal year, and that'll give us some time to adjust some things with this project. Everything could go completely well, which is what we're hoping, and that's what I expect to see, but in the event that we don't, I think this leaves us an option to kind of get things situated to a place where we get some really good numbers and we're happy with everything. So, yeah, that is, that is how I would propose to proceed with this particular project. And if you guys have any questions at all, I would be, I know there's a lot of moving pieces here, so if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Or if you want to come in and sit down, we can walk through things, for sure, but...
Blue line, water line, same diameter throughout the whole project?
Yes, sir. Everything that was proposed originally. The only thing that's different is that large section along Sixth Ave. that we're going to get in and replace.
And what's that diameter?
That one's an eight.
Eight. Yeah. Go ahead. Just for, let me get these, the blue dots are the fire hydrants?
Yes, sir.
So we don't have any, anything at this point in time to do West Seventh Avenue North? That's not even part of the project?
No, this is what's proposed. And then the grayed out area, you can see all the streets that have that gray tint to them. Those are all the streets that are proposed to be overlaid in the spring, you know, maybe next fiscal year after July 1. But at the start of the project, we also, at one point, we were not going to overlay West Sixth Avenue North, just because that has had some previous work. There is some gutter sections that are fairly bad there that I would really like to get corrected and fixed. But if it comes down to it, that could be an option where we may not overlay that road if push comes to shove. But that would be the one that I would take out of the project if we absolutely had to.
So then Nineteenth and West Fifth Avenue will be resurfaced in the spring, along with the others?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what's proposed.
And the red line there, underneath the park?
Yes, that's a new storm sewer going through there.
Storm sewer.
Yep. That's upsizing the storm sewer to accommodate for the stormwater runoff that that area currently sees.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, you're fine.
Go ahead.
Just a really quick question, Matt. How often do we normally scope our lines to see if there are cracks or anything like that? I'm just curious, since I'm kind of new to the whole thing.
For a storm sewer, usually we go through and clean them as far as televising them. It's, it varies. It really does, depending on issues in that part of the, in that part of the neighborhood versus complaints, things like that. But it, we have routine maintenance that we go through every year where we clean the lines and everything, but as far as getting in there and televising, it's really, it's kind of a cost benefit type situation where if there's problems, we'll get in there and we'll televise it, but it does cost a substantial amount of money to go through all the time and televise. But we do have a lot of televising videos, you know. It's just difficult to kind of pinpoint an exact timeframe on that.
Perfect. That helps a lot. Thank you.
Matt, could you just repeat for me what the, now the current estimate for Phase One is on the budget?
Yes. So the current estimate for Phase One is going to be, and this is all in with engineering and construction, everything, is going to be around or a little under that one point two million.
One point two?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So this, this contract one is going to be a tad higher with those improvements that we've added to it, but then we kind of make some of that back up in Contract Two.
Questions, comments, Council? Matt? Thank you, Matt. All right, as I read this resolution, Matt, keep, keep track that I get the right dates here for each of these. I know they're on the gray sheets as well, but I think I've got the right ones here. I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2521, a resolution to provide for a notice of hearing, which shall be July 21st, and letting, which shall be July 17th, on proposed plans, specs, form of contract, estimate of cost for the 2025 Street and Utility Improvements Contract Number One. Am I correct on that? Okay. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dana, seconded by Bennett, that we approve Resolution 2521, that's with regard to 2025 Street and Utility Improvements Contract One. Is there any discussion? Roll call. Creighton.
Yes.
Beth Ann.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
And Mark. Motion carries. Five, zero. And Resolution 2521 is duly adopted. Chief Police Report. Welcome, Chief Colby.
We've got three things to discuss tonight. Number one, our dispatcher Amber Nuring put together our packet on a presentation that she would like to give at the 2025 Iowa Peer Support Foundation Conference, and she was selected to present that in September. So Amber's going to put together a presentation and be part of that conference, teaching about two hundred attendees on making healthy life choices and navigating life without vices such as sugar, alcohol, and the negative effects they have for those in public safety. So she's presenting that here in September. The department will send her down there for the whole conference, and she'll present for about an hour and a half there as well, too. So that was kind of a nice little accolade she got, putting together her packet. Amber's got a lot of training that she came to us from, with the Stargard County Sheriff's Office, and previously before that, she was at the Freeborn County Sheriff's Office. So she is a trained negotiator through the National Tactical Office Association. She's a peer support certified as well, and so she'll be able to go to the conference and present at that. So it's kind of a nice little honor for her. I myself was, found out last Friday, at the end of the day, that the governor has signed some paperwork to appoint me to the Iowa ISICS Board, so it's the Iowa State Interoperability Communication System. So I will be the law enforcement representative on that board, so that governs basically our interoperability radio communications throughout the state. So I'll start on that next month. So it'll be once a month, meeting down in the, at the Dallas County Human Resources Building, and there's representatives all across the state. And then I'll also head up a subcommittee in that, too, which I'm not quite sure which one that's going to be yet, too. So it's a nice honor that the governor has appointed on me. And then, as Councilman Branton has seen, our UTV is here. It's all outfitted. Our officers are going through training, a certification process to be able to operate that UTV for our summer events and maybe even some of the winter events, if it's not too cold. And then hopefully this week, Lasher Graphics will come up and put the stripe on it, so it'll be labeled Clear Lake Police and everything on the side, too. So our goals have it completely striped, ready to go by Thursday, so we can use it Thursdays on Main this week, if not the following, the week there, too. So those are our three big things that have happened the last two weeks, and unless there's any questions, that's all I have to report.
Congratulations on your appointment and the officer.
Yeah. Be a good deal for Amber, and for us, too, so glad to support her.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments?
Just congratulations, Chief.
Thanks. We'll see if it's a congratulations or, we're sorry. Yeah. Right now, it's congratulations.
Condolences.
Yeah. One or the other. I'll let you know next month. Thank you.
We're ready for the big weekend, or big week, aren't we? I mean, that's a hundred percent. Hundred percent. All right. Thank you. Thank you. And Jeremy is not here tonight. Anything related to that, Matt, or?
Just an update on that. We're going to be starting potentially towards the end of this week, if weather permits and scheduling permits, but it may be next week, we're going to get in and do the HMA surfacing in the Public Works area, just for that large item to pick up the discussion budget. So that's going to be going on. The surfacing portion of it, for sure, is supposed to be scheduled to go on for the 24th and 25th. We'll get something posted out online for residents. We'll probably close the Public Works facility down just for some trees and drug, just because we don't wanna, there's so many construction vehicles that are gonna be moved around in there that maybe two, a couple days, shut down there until we get back. We'll look at that.
Chief, you and Jeremy are connected, you have been for years, I assume this year, too, with regard to street blockage, parking, et cetera, et cetera, so?
Yes, we had a meeting two weeks ago, I think, at the Chamber with all the players, the Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works. Amber was there, and we basically took last year's map, made really small tweaks to it, and we found out that it looked really well for us, but changed it last year, and aren't gonna change much of anything for this year. So, yeah, I think we're set for all the stuff that was listed here in the Fourth of July, the yacht club regatta, cruise on the beach, which will overlap with the yacht club, everything works, we're ready to go for the most part, just waiting for it to get here and set up and let the party start.
Basically, the fireworks issue is controlled by the state?
It is. We have a department training coming up on June twenty-fourth, which will cover all that stuff, but you all get invited for rewards that are coming up on the twenty-fourth. Yeah.
Under Mayor's report, I just wanna thank the council for, last Friday, the successful workshop that we had and the review of council goals and priorities. It was a good, good five hours. And then Jacob finally let us eat lunch. That's good, Jacob. Appreciate your kindness, Jacob, that's good. We need a motion on this next one, appointment of Christie King, Burglum and Cram, as the City of Clear Lake representative, one of them really, to the North Iowa Corridor Economic Development Corporation Board for the term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. Motion please on that appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Bethann, that we approve the appointment of Christie King to the NIC. Is there any, excuse me, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Speaking, North Iowa Corridor, Chad, welcome. Chad Shrek, CEO, North Iowa Corridor, welcome, Chad.
Thank you, Mayor, council, thank you all for your appointment of Christie King, and she'll be a great representative of the community on our board. She's been a great partner of ours in a lot of projects, and she's done a lot of work with the city before, and really excited. And I know when she was on the Chamber Board, she was a phenomenal member there as well, so really appreciate that and that she is accepting that position with us. I'll be brief, 'cause this week, you'll hopefully be hearing a lot from me with our annual meeting on Wednesday, we've got over almost two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifteen people attending over at the Surf Ballroom, so really excited, that's our best attendance ever. So we'll try to, try our best to fill up the surf, it's not very easy, but it's really exciting to see that kind of excitement and people coming out for us. Jason Henderson from Iowa State's gonna be our keynote speaker. We'll be recognizing board members and incoming board members and all the other good things that we do at those things, as well as really trying to dive into our strategic plan. I appreciate the mayor, Jacob, our board members over the last couple of months have been reviewing that and working with the UNI Institute for Decision-Making Team to really hone in on our strategies and priorities for the year, next two, three years ahead. So we'll be laying that out a little bit at the annual meeting and just discussing those items. As always, we'll be trying to strengthen our existing industries, trying to recruit new ones, improve the quality of life and amenities in our communities like we have been, but paid a little more attention this go-around to our organization and how we can continue to develop ourselves as a, hopefully, a high-end, high-quality organization that runs well and it serves you guys and our community members as best we can. So really appreciated the efforts on that, think we've put together a good plan, and now we'll be working on implementing and getting those things done. Also, you'll also have to hear from me at the Quarterly Coffee on Friday, so I don't wanna belabor the point and get everybody out of here. I got ballgames tonight, too, so I gotta run. But no, and if there's any questions for me or anything else. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Stacy, CEO, Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce, Stacy Dawn.
Alright, I've got one graduated and one married, so I'm back. Alright, so it is a busy week, aside from Chad's annual meeting event, there are a couple other exciting things happening this week, so the Jade Apartments are gonna have their open cutting, open, open cutting, their ribbon cutting and open house on Wednesday from four to six. The ribbon cutting will take place at four, and then they're gonna be open for refreshments and tours and those types of things, so please stop by and officially help us celebrate that they've got the ability to move people in, and I think they might be moving people in already. So at the same time, Bank Iowa is also holding an open house, and then their ribbon cutting will be at four forty-five. So let's welcome another new business to Clear Lake, they're right across the street from each other, so that makes it kind of convenient to jump to both of them. And then Chad mentioned we have our Quarterly Coffee on Friday, we are going to welcome new Clear Lake Community School District Superintendent Ian Die is going to join us. Not sure what to give him for a time limit yet on his remarks in the morning at the Quarterly Coffee, but we'll see if, you know, I have to tell him ten minutes, or if I have to tell him five minutes, you know, we'll see if he's like Doug, or Mayor, or Chad. And then also on Friday, Snow Construction has constructed and is opening a new showroom, that's at their twenty-five-hundred South Eighth Street location, so they're gonna do an open house from twelve to six, and then we're gonna cut the ribbon on their new showroom at four. So lots to celebrate this week. I know Nelson's gonna talk about his trip to the I-Tip Conference and the award that he took home, so I'm not gonna steal your thunder there, but next time we meet, Fourth of July, we'll have been here and has, will have gone. And so we're looking forward to another great Fourth in Clear Lake. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Questions, council? Thanks. Stacy really should be talking about this, but anyway, I'll, but the, fortunate to attend last Tuesday in Winterset, Iowa, I'd never been there before, that's kind of interesting country down there, and they got all those covered bridges and et cetera, et cetera, and what, movie was made, I do believe of that, we won't go into that, but anyway, the Iowa Travel Industry Organization really covers the state with regard to tourism impact, and obviously, we're very interested in that, and that was my interest when I first came on here twenty years ago, and Kirk Craft had indicated he was not going to run for election anymore, and I was tired of doing my year after I retired from NIAC of honeydew jobs, and so I thought I'd get a little more work, and I sure got a little more work. But fortunate to attend this conference, they had chosen Clear Lake as doing an excellent, very, very good job over these last years, really goes back to the mid-nineteen nineties on the restoration of a, I think at the time we called it, we wanted a cleaner, clearer lake, and there are all kinds of things. Some of us in this room may have gone to school with that nice smell of green algae on us from swimming in the lake, and the lake, I remember one guy flew over and he said, "Oh, I see you now have a green lake rather than a blue lake," and of course, an exaggeration, but a lot of people then went to work to make sure that our lake is better now, and a lot better. The other day, I talked with Scott Gummer, DNR Fisheries biologist, and he indicated that twenty years ago, they used a secadis disc, they could look down and only see as far as three inches. The other day, they used it, now I don't think what time of the year it is and how rough the lake has been, they could, where they did it, and they could see down thirty inches. So we've come a long ways, and obviously, the people in the state, this particular organization, and those who represent that organization across the state, felt that we have done a really good, good job and continue to do it. Counsel, you're all a part of that, and the councils that all came up through. Recall, we have hired Joel Swittenberg now to be the part-time watershed director, and yes, our lake is cleaner, clearer now, but guess what that caused? It caused more underground water plants to grow, and so now, that's wonderful for the fishing, but those who have boats on lifts and try to get them out into the water, they have to go a good distance to where the depth becomes at least ten feet to not have any of those growing plants, what a curly pond leaf and what is it, Euro, I can never get that through my teeth and out, but it's become a problem, it gets wrapped around the lower unit of the, of the motors and things get tied up. But overall, the number of people that have been coming here to see the lake, beyond the lake, fish on the lake, the other day I read, of course, there's all kinds of information that goes out about what's the best fishing lake in the state of Iowa, and I started, and they had from twenty on down, I started at twenty, went down, I never did see Clear Lake, I thought they left us out completely, and there we were at the top, at number one of the best fishing lake. They say walleyes are the best they've ever been out there, so go out there, dangle a hook, and you're liable to catch one like you used to do, the bullheads, no, not quite that bad, but anyway. Things are being recognized across the state, and we, last year, according to Libby Han, and she's in charge of tourism here in Clear Lake, there were one point one million visitors here in Clear Lake, in this area, whether they went in the water or whether they didn't, they came to this town. And they like what they see, now we have VRBOs, be they good, bad, or indifferent, that's caused people to come here, and that's also caused us to look at the housing situation. And now we have four of them that are in process, you might say. We just heard about one, in which Stacy thinks they're already moving in to that place, and we haven't even had the ribbon cutting, excuse me, there yet. So anyway, once again, going back, we were in Winterset in an old livery, know what I'm saying, livery? You know what it's for?
Horses. Delivery?
Horses.
Horses.
Not delivery, but livery, it's a redone livery, and what a neat place to have that all restored, done, done very, very well, and we got to see one of the covered bridges, which I was pleased with, I had never seen that before, so it was good. So we got an award, they also, the same group had been to Cabin Coffee, and they got an award for what, eating restaurant of the year, that is very concerned and connected, not concerned, but connected to tourism, and also, North Iowa Central Gardens. You know, that's where I worked in two schools that are no longer there now, but up from the rubble came this wonderful, wonderful piece of a park there, and really, really needed. So anyway, if you'd like to see this wonderful award, this is what we have received, Cabin Coffee got one, and Central Gardens got one, so...
It does say, elected official of the year.
You don't need to open your mouth.
Mayor Nelson Crabbe.
It does.
So, thank you for your leadership and all of those wonderful things, Mayor. Here, this is an award.
Yes, turn it around.
Elected official of the year. There you go, let's give him a round of applause.
Looks to me like a teardrop, doesn't it? Thank you, thank you, anyway. And with that being said, you heard me just allude to the fact that this is in the middle of twenty years, and I will not be seeking reelection this November, and so I think the word has been out for eons, but this is official, you know, I've made a decision that, that, to use the bad English, Mr. Center, I'm sorry, but it ain't easy doing that because the, it's not just politicians I've worked with, but it's friends that I have worked with, and that includes the community, you know, it's a, it's a great place to be, I don't think there's any better guy from this original North Jersey guy that came out here and was gonna stay two years and tell my wife, "We gotta get out of here." Well, it was two years, three kids later, sixty years down the road, I haven't left and won't, so. Anyway, thanks for that, we'll jump on to City Administrator's Report, Workers' Compensation Insurance Renewal Day. Jacob, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things tonight, so for the work comp insurance for next fiscal year, we just got the renewal numbers back, and we're actually seeing a nice decrease for fiscal year twenty-six versus fiscal year twenty-five, so it's actually going down nearly fifty thousand dollars, which is almost forty percent. So just really excited to see that number coming down, it's very reflective of, we've tried to have a better safety culture here in the commu, in the city, and just make sure that our employees are going home to their families every single night, and so that's in our work comp claims over, they look at a three to five-year period, it's really increased, the number of claims and severity of claims have really gone down. In fact, we, we haven't had an injury claim since November twenty-first of last year, which is two hundred and seven days, which is very uncommon. A lot of times, you'll see one every other month, or every month, so just really pleased with the work that the department heads have done with that, focusing on safety, and just nice to see that number reflected in our premium for this upcoming year, so very excited about that. The other thing on the docket, then, was the full-time parks worker maintenance position, so we had a good number of applicants that applied for that position, we interviewed around a half dozen of them, and we have one that really stood out, it's Phil Boyle, he's actually right now down in Marshalltown, he's been working with their Parks Department down there for a number of years now, I think around ten years, but he is originally from this area up here, from Mason City, and has had a real strong desire to be back to the area, so I think his, his skill sets will fit in really well for that position, and we're really excited to have him coming on board. He actually starts next Monday, so just excited for him to be starting, and I know Jim's super excited, has been out on paternity leave, so they've been down, so having another worker come on board in their busy season here will really help them out, so that's all I have.
Any questions, comments for Jacob? None appearing? Anything else to come before the council? None appearing? Meeting adjourned.